Yes, it is. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. I'm going to call the meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Catherine, would you and your three individuals like to lead us today? Thank you. I would just remind everyone, if you have a cellphone, if you can silence it, if you need to take a call, you could step out into the hallway. And also, we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still take comments from individuals of items that are not on the agenda for information only. The two phone numbers that they can call in are 605-882-6248 and 605-882-6297. We will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the July 19th, 2022 agenda. Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the July 12th, 2022 minutes of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners. Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. We'll move right on to item number six, action on a request to sell alcohol at an American cornhole organization event at the Extension Center. So if Catherine and Angelica, and I'm sorry if you, Jamie, would like to come up and sit here and explain to us what this is all about.
Yep, come on up.
Come on up, yeah. That's okay.
Just have a seat.
If you would just introduce yourself then, so we have that for the record and then.
Angelica, you the Director of Marketing and Business Development at the Watertown Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Jamie Erickson, I'm with Dempsey's Brewery Pub and Restaurant.
I'm Catherine Danforth, the Executive Director of the Watertown Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Okay, so I've been working with the American Cornhole Organization, and we've secured a stop on their Season 18 Majors Tour. Here in Watertown, it's the only stop in South Dakota, and they've had events in communities similar to our size, such as Carney, Nebraska. So they're hoping 100 to 150 contestants for this first stop in Watertown. And then, once they, you secure a stop, they pretty much want to come for a three-year term. And they like to have reasonable food and beverage. And then, they do like to have alcohol at their events. And we thought the Extension Complex would be a great facility and host it similar to how the camel races are held.
What are the dates of that?
It's October 6th, 7th, and 8th. The 6th is mainly set up, but they may do like a welcoming social out there in the evening. And then, competition would be that Friday and Saturday.
What type of oversight are you going to have on the alcohol sales? Somebody going to be checking IDs?
Yes. So we are working with Dempsey's. They've done the camel races in the past. So all of their staff who is familiar with that type of service and overseeing that will be there handling all of that. And then, we'll likely have security out there, as that's a requirement of the ACO. And then, also, our staff will monitor where we can as well. Right, yep. And we've started the, yes, for sure, the Friday, Saturday, but we'll probably do all three days just to be safe.
Oh my gosh, to approve.
All right, motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Any other comments, questions?
So this is just beer and wine?
Right.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It is, it is, isn't it?
I think it's everything. The liquor license. It would be a full bar. Does that change your mind? It's been the same as, yeah, the camel races have been fine, so.
That's the same license.
Perfect.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, let's move on then to monthly reports. We'll start with the Emergency Manager. Good morning, Andrew.
All right, so kicking off with the budget.
Start with the budget.
I think so.
Get that out of the way.
Overall, it's going to be over 4.7 or.
Oh my.
Give us a second here.
I don't know.
We'll leave them like this in a minute.
Andrew, why don't you start with your other stuff there? We'll come back to the budget when we get organized here. It's all right.
Yeah, this is 2021. I don't worry about that.
Okay. We did submit the, okay, let's back up a little bit. We had the second draft June on record, which was in the last 128 years. I know that there were some concerns early July that, you know, things were going to keep going the same way. Burn ban, and I mean, we, I got a call, like to have that as an agenda item. But we have had average or slightly above, or in some cases, like up in the northwest part of the county, significantly above average rainfall in the last 30 days. We're currently not facing any drought conditions according to the drought monitor. We submitted quarterly reports for the HMEP, which is the Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant, which the fire department trains some of the students at Legaria. And also, the brick grant, we submitted a quarterly report for that. That was the Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities or in Community Grant, which is what funds the PDM. So those quarterly reports are done. For the L E M P G, that one's in progress. That's a big one. I've helped search and rescue, who was invited to assist with camp chants with PD. Pretty rewarding for, I think, both the search and rescue guys and the kids are certainly enjoying getting jet ski rides. It's just overall.
Have they done that in conjunction before? Is this the first year?
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, the PD, they invite us to help and it seems like.
They've done it for several years.
We also had our second PDM meeting, so things continue to go along on, like, on schedule with that. And if you remember last week, I talked about connectivity issues down in the weather office. I mean, we did get that antenna that, you know, supposed to boost the signal in that room. I mean, there may, there may have been a slight increase in performance. They worked on, you know, changing the filters for the booster. I mean, they got it the best that they could, but unless we upgrade the booster, I mean, that's probably where we're going to be at for the time being, so.
Except for cell phones or stuff down there?
Yeah. So it sounds like these old buildings, they, you know, cables get strong all over the place, and it just really impacts, you know, how it gets through. So, I mean, sometimes it, I mean, it takes a long time for things to load, or like, sometimes calls are pretty fuzzy.
So you've done everything that you can do as far as on that antenna thing?
Yeah. So they, they discussed getting a new booster. I guess we'll, like I told them to send us a bid, and we'd see, you know, what we can do with it, or if we want to do anything further with it.
And I'm not sure if we end up changing our phone services, if that will make a difference down there or not, if it's still going to be the same issue because of being in the basement.
Yep.
Okay.
This is so you can talk over cell phones in the basement.
Yeah. And sometimes, sometimes it works fine, but it seems like when we have significant weather, I mean, like, some of the, some of the calls that I was getting, especially during the May 12th one, were just really, really bad. And then, when I tried to, like, the best, my favorite app, I guess, to watch the radar is the one that's on my phone, and that one does not load well. And then, we reached out to potential applicants for federal aid from the May 12 storms, and set up an initial applicant briefing. There's going to be representatives from the State Office of Emergency Management and FEMA there to help those applicants get started. So we reached out to everybody who was listed in Grants Portal. If, for some reason, there's a public entity that is eligible, which means that they sustained over $3,500 in damage from those storms, and you didn't get a call from our office, please feel free to reach out, and I will give you more details on when and where that meeting is.
Is that just for Cottington County, or is it surrounding as well, or is that just for us?
Yeah, it's for Cottington County. So we set up the time, and if, if an applicant from Cottington County, so if one of the townships was eligible, for example, and couldn't make the Cottington County meeting, they could go to a neighboring county. So I'm assuming that, well, I mean, there may be others from outside the counties that come to ours, if their time, if their county's time doesn't work for them.
Some of the, so some of the eligibility is because other counties surrounding also met that, right? Because there had to be a certain threshold, so it could include other ones, but were separate, obviously, but it took other ones to meet the threshold?
From my understanding, Cottington County, based on the amount of damage, especially from the power companies, like, we did meet that threshold.
Okay. There was another one that it depended on, I think.
Right. So those were the Memorial Day storms.
Okay.
I guess coming up, we've got full-scale exercise for, that we're going to attend with Duell in Grant County. That's going to help us meet our requirement for the L E M P G. I have a severe weather preparedness presentation for the kids that are at the Farm Safety Show. Then, just so you guys have head to, I'll be gone for a couple days next week for military training. And finally, the budget. So overall, there's not a, not a whole lot of changes, I don't think. I mean, it's a 4.7 increase, 4.7% increase, which is below the current rate of inflation. So I don't know, I may be spending bigger dollar or bigger number, but it's going to be less money next year. I mean, in the first few lines there, I mean, basically, our cost of living adjustment, anticipated step increase, and then, O A S I, Medicare, I mean, those were just, you know, crunching numbers that Cindy helped provide.
Those are driven by line 411.
The, yeah. The next increase, or the next notable increase is going to be the insurance. Also, that's driven by the drones that we are now insuring. The professional services, it's for programming, five emergency management radios for P95. Supplies.
Five open for $750.
$150 piece. Well, I mean, I haven't heard anything other than the $150. There may be a group rate, but. That's just the programming costs.
That's the, that's.
Programming. That's not the radio.
Right. The radios were.
I was thinking it was like 300 for us to get each radio programmed, but I don't know. Maybe you get a group discount or something.
For the emergency management supplies, I figured out, I mean, we drive about 1,000 miles a month, and, and, yeah, just figured out, I mean, we get about 10, 10 to 12 miles per gallon in our hog. So we got about $2,000, $2,000 more annually for fuel. And then, also wanted to get, like, magnetic whiteboard, just some more writing space, workspace for our E O C. So when that kicks off, we have, you know, places where people can actually work and write out some of their plans. The travel budgets. A lot of the travel that we have isn't really optional, I guess, so to speak, but, I mean, we're anticipated to, to go a little bit over this year. So I did increase that slightly. And that's, those are the only changes from last year that I've worked into the budget.
Cindy, that emergency management supplies also includes a fuel line budget for vehicles?
Say that again.
Emergency management supplies also includes fuel?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no separate fuel.
Some departments separated out, emergency management has never asked for that, so.
Okay.
That's, yeah. I will say, I'm not sure if you're budgeting enough for insurance after the meeting I went to last week.
Is that across the board?
Rates are not going to go down. So if you did not add anything more than, you know, the drone, I would suggest we're going to need to look at that. Insurance rates are going to be going up again. Property liability, everything, cybersecurity, it's not going to end anytime soon.
So it looks like for.
Might need to look at that.
Which those changes will come, and then we'll adopt those.
Well, I mean, you know, in September, we can make changes now because I have not published anything yet, so.
It appears that 2019 through 2021, we extended about, an average, I guess, 12,500, I guess, just kind of looking at those numbers.
So were you rolling to look at last year's?
So that's.
Drone's working this year based on recommendations from our provider.
That emergency management insurance, does, what, what all does that cover?
That covers.
Vehicles.
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 Personnel?
Search and rescue vehicles.
Like personnel, that's covered under.
Look on this.
Yeah.
Explanation sheet. It's got all of that in there.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Radios.
Yes, all of our inland marine items. We also cover search and rescue vehicles. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yep.
So the workman's comp insurance actually covers.
Workman's comp is a separate line item above personal services.
Okay, I got you.
That, I think, is adequate. I don't believe you need to change anything there, but I'm not so sure of it. Okay, so, yeah, if we didn't, we spent almost $14,000 last year. You've got it at 17. I mean, you can go with that if you want.
So you can get a quote on versus too early?
It's too early, yeah. It's just a kind of a heads up. You know, you may find where you're at with 17.
Yeah, is that 16 or the current?
16 is the current.
And he spent, and expended 12.
Spent 12. Yeah, so you're probably good there. I do need to go back and look, though, at the insurance that we budgeted for in the Commissioner's budget. I think we need to increase that. Just based on what I learned last week, so.
Insurance carrier from the board meeting I went to, yeah.
It's not a surprise.
Nope. Nope. It's natural, natural disasters are driving all of this. So, and natural disasters and law enforcement. Not necessarily our law enforcement, but law enforcement nationwide, because it's all grouped together inside of, in cyber, cyber security.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Facilities manager will not be able to speak here today.
Okay, then let's move on to Highway Superintendent. Morning.
Good morning. First off. Well, our chip ceiling should end today, barring any breakdowns or anything like that. We're currently doing right by our shop on 14th Avenue. We've got a lot of traffic on there trying to manage that, because it works out just perfect at the time of the day where there is a lot of traffic there, being Sturtevant Avenue is closed with the bridge and stuff, so. And they'll be moving north of town on County Road 10, just on the other side of the interstate. There's some spots that we're going to finish the tanker out there, that we had some road breakup earlier this spring. And that should conclude the majority of our chip ceiling. We have maybe a little, we're going to try and seal up a spot. It'd be six and a half miles north of Tinkerton on County Road 23 that we grade raised last year. And it's, it's, the top of it is re-ground asphalt, and it's pretty good, but we're going to try and seal it up for this winter. And then, we'll start working on things that we haven't had time to do since we've been chip sealing for the last month or a little over. We've got some soft spots on county roads, on the gravel, that we're going to have to dig out. Some of them have gotten better, some of them have not. There's just enough traffic with people hauling different things to keep them soft.
You, oh, go ahead.
Some of the stuff, you would think as warm as it's been, it'd dry out. Yeah, there's, you dig down in the road, and it's still, some of it's like pudding. But we've got a lot of things that we're going to start hauling gravel. A lot of things we'll be working on, getting, getting caught back up. Chip sealing takes quite a while. It was a little bit of a struggle. One day, we did not get oil. We couldn't get a truck. And there was a couple days, we had one load show up, and they had an issue down at the plant, canceled one load for us, so, but we worked through it. Wayne Transport was really good on getting a trailer, so we could leave it overnight to pump it off, so. But just, it's been kind of quiet, so that's, that's good for the highway department when it's quiet. So if you have any questions, I'm.
Anyone have any? Move on to the budget.
All right. The handout that I gave you, there's one correction on the last page. We're overlay project. I have County Road 10 and 75. There's also, I forgot to put on there, County Road 23, there's roughly a quarter mile, the same thing that I was talking about on County Road 23. I'd like to get an overlay on that if it's out of the water. Because that, that whole area over there, we never know what spring's going to bring us. But, all right, to start off with the wages, I put like in a 3% for that. Everything else, except for health insurance and some of that, I had 10%. And that, workers' cot, everything was just, there was always a, like, 3% on most everything. Striping and everything on the 426 for parts and supplies. Everything, I tried to keep it as minimal as I could. Some stuff will be moved around. The major things were like our gas, our diesel, our chip sealing oil. I raised that 25%, because that's basically what everything went up this year. So there is, hopefully, I'll have a little bit of room in there. But I also have a new dump truck that I'd like to order, a new loader, new tractor mower, and oil pot. Those are the four things that I would like to have for next year's budget.
This oil pot, is that to replace that old one in the shed?
Yes, the one that's 70 years old, yes.
And tractor mower, is that to replace that John here?
Yes. It, that would be our oldest one, and I do believe that is like a 97.
Yeah, I mean, it is.
Yep, yeah, it's.
It was parked outside last night, right?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you. There was, could be a mower sitting out there. I'm not sure. It's the more road ditches, so.
Yep.
Yep.
That's the John beer.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yep, and that would be, the mower tractor that we're getting this year will be, the one I get next year would be identical to that, except it only have one mower deck on it. The one we're getting, hopefully we get this year, we'll have two mower decks. And, uh, because we use that for different things on places where we can't get with the two decks, so.
How many hours around that one now?
Right off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
It's been in service since ninety-seven?
Yes, so it's, it's due to be replaced. And those are one of the things that in that fifteen to twenty years, we replace because otherwise then you're found that replacing other things along with that, so. And then, uh, road and bridge. Uh, I raised that. I can't remember exactly right off the top of my head. That was like three percent. Capital improvements, I raised that a hundred thousand. Wheel tax stays the same every year. And, uh, gravel, crushed gravel, roughly fifty thousand ton, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. I didn't say it.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. And then there, the overlay project is roughly a million dollars. Some of that on the roads that I wanna do, there's a gravel pit. This would be east of town. And some of it has deep wheel ruts on it. And, uh, there's a few spots that need to be dug out. But, uh, that's.
Where does that, what line does that fit under that, this last section here? What line on the budget does that, is that going with?
The overlay?
The overlay and the gravel, let's see. Is that in this, is that?
Yeah, hopefully that, yep, yeah, because I'm not exactly sure what asphalt will cost next year. And, uh, you saw what it costs this year. It almost doubled from what the big project was we had last year, so.
So are those numbers in the budget there?
Yes.
Not there?
Yeah, they're, not everything that's on this page is in here, so.
So you're gonna.
I think it's a different.
No, I, nothing, nothing's gonna increase from what this is.
Okay, all right.
No, I just added that extra road on there. I forgot to put it on my sheet, so.
On your explanation.
Yeah, on the explanation.
It's in the numbers.
Okay, that's, that was my concern. Okay.
Okay, so, I see. Okay, so it's all basically piled up.
So the numbers, um, and you're gonna see some difference here from last year because Department of Legislative Audit recommended that we quit using, we had like, uh, four different activity numbers for, for the road and bridge budget, and she said they advised us everything should be under one activity number. So you can see there, it looks like Rick's budget dropped from five, or from increased from four point eight to five point six, but that four point eight is not the total budget for this year. Five point one is the total budget for this year.
Right here, this part, here you're talking about.
Yeah, that part right there, um, it's because of the change in, in the activity number, so it's misleading to make it look like his budget's increasing that huge month. It's increasing from five point one to five point six, so.
Yeah, because I roughly had, uh, four hundred and forty-four thousand for an increase this year of eight point five five percent from what it was last year, just for the fact that I have no idea what a lot of this stuff is gonna cost. You know, we, you saw that this year, what things cost, just my fuel went up twenty-five percent, so. I, I'm in no control of any of it. That's why I try to get out and get it ordered as soon as I can. So.
Yeah, we know that.
Just a question maybe first, maybe for you or Cindy. Uh, four twenty-nine, ten, refresh my memory, that sounds like the road and wheel, road and bridge wheel tax. It sounds like a revenue stream, doesn't sound like a expense, but how does that work again? Where it says two, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Um, no, that's.
Well, that's what we pay.
Doesn't sound like it. That's what we pay, okay.
It comes from, I mean, there is a revenue stream to offset it, um, yes. Uh, Rick's budget does create revenue, just not enough to support the whole budget, so we have to transfer from the general fund to the highway budget every year. Every county does. I don't believe there's a single highway department in the state that is self-funding.
So that's a transfer in to, to this budget?
No, it's not. It's, it's the amount that, from the wheel tax that we collect, it's the amount that Rick is allowed to use for his budget purposes.
That's what, okay.
Yes, yes.
So it's kind of a general, it does, but it's not necessarily paying to a particular, like, gravel or.
No, 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 whatever road need Rick has, wheel tax can be spent.
All right.
Yep.
This part, verification there increases eight point five five from last year.
Approximately, yeah.
Yes. Because like she said, that's a little misleading from what, what's on that sheet.
Sheets have changed, yeah.
Yep.
Next year it'll look better.
All right.
Yeah, it was a little bit, putting it together was. It was challenging.
Yeah.
Put it that way.
Yes. Yep.
Anyone have any other questions or?
I tried to keep as much, as low as I could, but like I said, there's, there's so much out there that we have no control over that. I'm, I'm just hoping that that's enough, so. You know, pretty hard to raise everything twenty-five percent. You're, you wouldn't like that number.
No, for sure.
So.
Just, um, since you're here, Rick, I'll just bring up the fact that, yeah, in the next week or two, Rick's gonna be in front of this board requesting to drop the speed limit on South Lake Drive from Highway one thirty-nine. We'll get that on the agenda, but just to give you an idea that that's coming, okay?
Yep, there's a couple spots on there that.
From like sandy shores to one thirty-nine.
Yes.
To put everything uniform with how the city's adjusted the speed limits, so.
And then from County Road seven.
We gotta do a resolution.
And that's what he's gonna, he's gonna get that process started, so.
All right.
Overdue.
Yeah.
Yes, we could do that. Yep. Ready? Actually, to approve a resolution authorizing application for the big, big improvement grant funds.
This is a, a federal grant, so there won't be a match on this if we would get it, but there's only six million dollars in this for the funding. And, uh, I know six million dollars sounds like a lot, but this is through the whole state, so three bridges could wipe this out. Even a couple of them could wipe all this out, and we're going to apply for this grant. But, uh, there's no guarantee that we'll get it. This is on our County Road two north of town. It'd be on, uh, Cottonwood Street. Because we currently have a load limit on that bridge right now. And, uh, we'll see what happens to apply for this grant, so make a motion to.
My Gable second by Johnson. Any other comments or questions?
So we don't know how much we're applying for, is that right?
We're just applying to see if we can get it, because.
Okay, so they don't ask you for.
Well, the, the bridge estimate was, uh, one point something million dollars.
Anything.
No, there's nothing on there.
To indicate how much we're asking for that.
No.
How are they going?
Minimum local match on that.
Yeah, how are they going to determine that?
So they're either gonna pay for, if we, we would get a grant, it'll be all or none, right?
Yeah, if, if we would get the grant, it would be paid for. So, um, yeah, we, we would have no match on this, so.
It's gonna say twenty percent match on the application here?
There is, that's on.
Project amount, requested grant amount plus local match, twenty percent minimum.
When I was talking to Mark Younger from Banner, this would be a complete.
Okay.
Just the way it's set up.
So where there's this total project amount, we didn't have to have an amount?
No, he didn't.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Because Mark helped fill it out, so.
It's just part of this, so it's part, as I understand, it's kind of part of the statewide.
Yes, but this, this is federal money.
Yeah, it's all, yeah.